Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. It's August 21st, 2023, and we are starting the meeting at 6:03 PM. Can we have roll call, please? Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Garcia? Ms. LaFave?
Present.
Ms. Brunel?
Here.
Mr. Romero? Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Ms. Rivera-Colon?
Here.
Ms. Feliciano?
Here.
Mr. Wellinghan?
Here.
Mr. Calamore?
And Mrs. Wilson?
Present.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. It feels like so long since we had a meeting, right? Oh, my goodness. Well, here we go with the spiel again. So on March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from March 31st, 2023 to March 31st, 2025. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. So, without further ado, we're going to move on to student showcase, and we do not have one for today. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to public comment. Did anyone sign up for public comment, Ms. Garcia?
No public comment.
Was anything sent by email?
No.
Okay, great. Moving on to communications and reports. Everybody in your packets, you received the dates for our next upcoming school committee meeting. School committee meeting dates. So obviously, today, the next one is September 18th, October 16th, November 20th, December 18th, and January 2nd, which will be the, I just had a brain fart. The organizational meeting, thank you. So from there, whoever is the vice chair will then work along with Ms. Garcia to develop the schedule for the remainder of the school year. Any questions on that? Seen no questions. We're going to move on to the next section, which is ward meetings. So some of us were around when we had ward meetings. And I think it's really important that we we start with that. Again, this year, starting to develop the relationships with your community and the members within your community and figuring out what are some of the concerns or issues or what's going well, right? Because that's who you're representing. So I did put some recommendations as to how these meetings should be, who should start them off, and I kind of did it where we one skip, then the other one. So for September, my recommendation is for wards 1 and 3 to schedule a meeting in September. Obviously, send us the date so that we can, you know, be there as well to support you and also to hear back from the families. For October, it would be 2 and 4. November would be 5 and 7, and December would be 6 and at-large. If for any reason you can't do any of these, again, check with your colleagues, see if you can swap the month or whatever. Just figure out the location. The schools are more than happy most of the time to hold something or if there's an area, you know, within your zone that you can host it at, or even the library. Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Is this something that we can partner with our city counselor from our ward?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to like tag team it, that might be it. Yeah.
Yep, yes. They used to do, some did, some didn't, it depends, you know? So if you have a really a good relationship with your ward city counselor, by all means, that would be great, and if some at-large city counselors can be present as well, even better.
Great, thank you.
No, no problem. So any other questions on the ward? Nope, okay, great. The next thing on the agenda is the Thrive Act. So you all received in your packet both the Thrive Act that Ms. Wilson had presented to the committee two months ago, as well as a template of the Thrive Act that has been signed by, you know, other school committees. So with that being said, did you guys want to decide? Because you asked me as the vice chair to submit and that we're signing off on the Thrive Act as a committee. Ms. Wilson? Ms. Wilson, can you just make sure that your finger is not?
I thought I was loud enough, sorry. But thank you for sharing, you know, the complete information with everyone. And I would be, you know, happy to remove mine. I think the one that's in the first one, that's in our packet, the resolution for we would put the Holyoke Committee supporting an act empowering students and schools to thrive. You know, I would be for that. And I would, are we just going to go and make a motion?
Do I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve and adopt?
Or would it be?
Approve and?
A motion to have the vice chair sign on, or sign on for the Holyoke School Committee?
Would be the Holyoke School Committee would vote to support this resolution.
That's the wording.
Second.
So there's a motion set by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Brunel for the Holyoke School Committee to support the Thrive Act that starts with a resolution of the Holyoke School Committee supporting an act empowering students and schools to thrive. I'll just read it real quick. You want to read it?
I'd love to. So the title is "A Resolution of the Holyoke School Committee Supporting an Act Empowering Students and Schools to Thrive", open parentheses, "Thrive Act", close parentheses. "Whereas Massachusetts students deserve a system of educational accountability improvement that considers the whole child and focuses on giving students and educators the tools and resources students need to succeed and thrive, and whereas local families, students, educators, and their democratically elected representatives know best what our local schools need, and whereas the state's role should be to support local schools in offering the evidence-based programs and supports that will help students thrive and to set standards that local schools can make sure students achieve, and whereas Massachusetts state takeover law and the state's high school graduation requirement based on MCAS have created disruptive and harmful learning environments for students, especially Black and Brown students, English language learners, and students with disabilities, and whereas the state takeover, excuse me, I'll start again, whereas the state takeover law has failed to improve students' outcomes while preventing local students, parents, educators, and community members, especially families of Black and Brown children, from having a voice and engagement on how their local schools are run, and whereas the state's requirement for graduation based on MCAS scores has deprived students from receiving their diploma and disrupted their futures while failing as an accountability and assessment tool, and whereas these top-down harmful educational approaches are increasing racial inequities in our schools rather than fixing them, and whereas exclusively high-poverty schools that primarily serve low-income students, I'm sorry, low-income students of color have been and continue to be targets for state takeovers using MCAS scores, and whereas our students deserve comprehensive, student-centered support systems guided by our democratic control, not more top-down, unaccountable bureaucratic disruption with no record of success, and whereas our students deserve comprehensive, student-centered support systems guided by holistic assessments that measure competency, capabilities, and real-world skills, and whereas legislation titled "An Act Empowering Students and Schools to Thrive", known as the Thrive Act, would replace the state's ineffective approach to educational assessment and improvement with policies that will help all students to succeed and thrive, and whereas the Thrive Act would support both students and schools by increasing the quality and consistency of academic instruction for students, aiding school districts in retaining highly qualified educators and building a better system that represents community voice, all while holding the state accountable for decades of failed policies, and whereas a Thrive Act would create a new assessment and support system that adheres to federal law and achieves the right balance between local democratic control and state oversight, and therefore, let it be resolved that the Holyoke School Committee supports the Thrive Act and instructs the vice chair to send a letter to our local legislative delegation and Governor Maura Healy to support the Thrive Act.
Thank you so much. So just so everyone knows, Pat Duffy did sign on to it.
Yes, she did.
And we're very grateful and thankful for that.
Who else did? It was a gentleman, Jake Olivera.
Yes, Jake Olivera. I believe Carlos Gonzalez, Adam Gomez. So with that being said, is there any discussion? We have a motion seconded by Ms. Brunel. No discussion? So all those in favor, so we have a discussion? Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I was thinking that there might be one change to actually send it to our city council to support the Thrive Act as well. And I'm not sure if that would go to the subcommittee?
That could be a referral to the subcommittee. So what this is asking us is to send it to the local legislative representatives, as well as the governor. But what we can do, if that's something that the body as a whole or, you know, the majority wants to refer to the subcommittee, the joint subcommittee, and they can discuss it there and see if that's something that they're willing to bring forth to the full city council board, because we're already making our decision here.
Yes, thank you.
So, Ms. Brunel?
Yeah, if I may just comment on that, I'd like to sign off on our own as well ahead because just thinking about timing, the joint committee meets again, and then it gets back to city council. This act might be taken up by then. I have a meeting with Pat Duffy next Wednesday, actually, and the scheduling of when this will be on their agenda is one of the things we're going to be talking about. So I would just like to see them get the letter from our body in advance of any votes, and then certainly take it up on our agenda to get the council on board, but just knowing that might not be able to happen in time for their initial conversations. So.
Absolutely. Any further questions?
Do we have two motions then?
No, we only have one right now. Right now, we're working on the motion of accept or for us to support this and asking me to send a letter to our local legislative representatives, as well as the governor. So on that motion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you asking for a roll call? Oh, he's on. Oh, okay. Well, I did not see him there. Okay, all right. So being that we have the mayor on Zoom, we're going to have to retake the vote, and this time it's going to be a roll call vote, and all votes will be roll call today. Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colon?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wellinghan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously.
Now I'd like to make a motion to send the policy to the subcommittee, the joint committee's subcommittee for review, so that our city council can review this and possibly support it as well.
So we have a motion by Ms. Wilson to send this resolution to the joint subcommittee of the city council and school committee for them to discuss and determine if to bring it back to city council for them to sign on, as well as a city council board. Is there a second? Mr. Calamore seconded? Is there any discussion? Nope. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia? Mayor Garcia? Ms. LaFave? Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colon?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wellinghan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is the Springfield Puerto Rican Parade. The mayor needs to know who's going to be attending this year on September 17th is the parade. So if you guys can just tell me now whether you can go, so this way we have a head count. So Ms. Brunel? Mr. Romero? Okay. It's September 17th, and I believe it's 11:00 AM. Is that correct, Mayor?
It's a Sunday.
It's a Sunday. Mayor Garcia, is it at 11:00 AM?
11:00 AM.
Yeah, it's about, it's kicking off for 11:00, but I want to confirm who's going so I can get a group message out there and get, as we get closer, make sure that you have the accurate details.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Brunel? Okay, so we have Ms. Brunel and Mr. Romero. Mr. Romero's a yes. Ms. Tensley-Williams? Are we going to have the van, Soto? They can look into it. So if we have the van, you are a yes. Okay, I'll put van here. Ms. Rivera-Colon?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wellinghan? Unable, okay. Mr. Calamore?
I will let him know at plenty of time.
Okay, sounds great. And Ms. Wilson?
Unfortunately, I'll be coaching that day.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
That's okay, you'll be there in spirit.
Absolutely.
Okay, and for myself, that'll be a yes. But anyways, I return on the 16th. And Evan? Will you be able to attend? I'm not sure who's the Holyoke High North representative, so at this point, Mr. Kennedy has been here each month, and he's been representing Dean consistently, and I'm so happy to have him here, and you better be here next month.
I will be here next month, but I will not be able to attend.
You won't be able to? Okay, but you'll be there in spirit. Maybe we should carry a picture of you with us. All right. So there you have it. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Mayor? Okay, next on the agenda is the upcoming, I wanted to provide you guys this information. If you'd like to join the, it's a Zoom webinar from the National School Board Association. The first presentation is on September 6th at 1:00 PM, and it's on Special Education Part 1, Is It Time for a Special Education Update? And then the Part 2 is Asking Questions, and that's on December 12th at 1:00 PM. If anyone would like to register, you just go onto the NSBA site, and you register for the for the webinar. Ms. Wilson?
Do you know if this is going to be videoed? Because I'd love to go, but it does interfere with my workday?
I believe it will be, and it'll be put on the communities, but I will look into it further.
Thank you.
The next thing is moving on to the superintendent receiver reports, but I'm looking here real quickly. Yeah. We forgot to put in student report. So... Oh, you see? But anyways, just make sure it's on there whether they're here or not. So is there a motion to suspend the rules and add in here?
Motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Sim, oh my, she's not going to give me a ride tonight. I know it, I'm going to walk home. We have a motion by Ms. Feliciano, seconded by Ms. Tensley-Williams. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor?
No, no discussion, ready to vote.
Oh, all right, roll call vote.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera-Colon?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wellinghan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. So, Mr. Kennedy, give us the lowdown.
So, very few updates, but first, Dean Tech is excited to share the news of the appointment of our new principal, Ms. Carachlo.
1985 graduate. From Holyoke High.
She will be joined in leadership with Mr. Solano, who will be serving as interim assistant principal, along with Mr. Kelly, vocational director. They will share a mission of leading our school and students to reach their greatest potential. Next, on August, nope, on Tuesday, August 29th, Dean will be hosting a ninth-grade family orientation where all staff will be able, will be available to meet with the newest members of our community. On the shop front, all nine career technical education shops will be open and ready for upper-class students to apply for co-op. And lastly, the school website will be our one-stop shop for families and students to keep up to date with all the happenings. And from a personal thing, as not only a student, but a student representative who works very closely with the school administration, I would like to thank all the people who are responsible for putting in the new leadership in school. I personally cannot think of a better or more competent team to lead our school in the right direction.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. Are there any questions for Mr. Kennedy? All righty, thank you again. We're going to go ahead and move on to superintendent receivers reports, so I'll pass it over to Mr. Soto.
Thank you. And we're going to get this slide deck up. I promise to be as quick as possible. I don't know what. I just wanted to give an update on our return-to-school effort. So the first item on the return-to-school agenda is the elementary and middle school bell times, as well as the high school times. You can see the first column here, Holyoke Stem Academy, Big Bang and Metcalf Middle are all going to be on the first tier, which means school starts at 7:45 AM and ends at 2:30. As a reminder, families are welcome to bring their children to school about 15 minutes prior to bell time. That's when we will have staff available and ready to let students in so that when 7:45 rolls around, they're in their seat and ready to learn. The second tier is Donahue, Ian White, Kelly Lawrence, Morgan, and Sullivan Middle School. Those are all, start at 8:45 with a dismissal of 3:30. And again, students being allowed to enter at 8:30 AM. And then on the next slide, we do have the Holyoke, the high school bell times, which is Dean and North Campus will be officially starting at 7:45 with a dismissal at 2:30. And then on Wednesday only, there'll be an early dismissal of about 1, at about 1:40. In Opportunity Academy, no changes to their time. They're at 8:00 AM, and Transitions at, or 8:25 AM, and Transitions is at 7:45 to 2:20.
Are there any questions? Ms. Brunel?
I just have a question. With the redistricting and rezoning, have families been notified of busing yet? Like if they qualify for busing, when they expect their bus? I know I haven't gotten any.
Actually, the very next slide.
Awesome. You beat me to it.
We have a quick transportation update. So happy to report that drivers did their dry runs, what we call dry runs, on Friday. And today, that's essentially, we send the bus company all of the routing information, and then the drivers bid on the routes, and then they go do the routes, and then come back with like, hey, this doesn't work because of XYZ. Can you make these changes? We get them in, and our plan is to send out communication on Wednesday, the 23rd. Big bus routes will be posted on the HPS website. And then, you know, we'll obviously release social media posts. We'll send out text messages notifying all the families. This is something that's new this year, but we figured out a way to do a mass communication tapping right into our system where every family that qualifies for busing is going to get a personalized message with their with their busing information. And then, as usual, like none of our none of our special education routes are posted online because those are door-to-door, and we, you know, we want to make sure that we respect people's privacy. So for that, individual calls will be made to parents, as we do every year. And, you know, we're just asking members of the community, we want you all to be aware that like the first couple of weeks of school is pretty chaotic, and there's a lot of changes with late registration. We get families that are enrolling like two weeks into the school year. And so whenever that happens, there's going to be a lot of changes in busing, and we'll make sure that our website is updated. I don't have information here on PVTA routes, which just reminds me, but those will also be a part of posts online.
We have two questions. Ms. Wilson?
Just to clarify, that parents contact the transportation company? They don't contact the school if they have any questions? Because it really isn't, or do they contact the school?
No, they contact our transportation department.
Department.
In the communication that's going to go out on Wednesday, we're going to have, we're going to let them know what the contact information is. Essentially, we have a transportation@HPS email that we have several people monitoring, at least for the first couple of weeks of school, because it's, you know, the amount of calls is pretty overwhelming.
Substantial.
Yeah, substantial for, or a department of two. I believe it's in your packet, but let me take a quick look.
Possibly you could post that on Facebook as well? Let me do the communication that way?
I will, I will make sure you get it. It's in the communication that's going to go out on Wednesday, so. I don't have, it wasn't in your packet, I'm sorry.
It's all right, thank you.
My question is, so that's for Durham. For Vanpool, is that as well going to be the school department, especially for our added district? Or are we going to wait to hear from Vanpool themselves?
Vanpool themselves. Vanpool themselves, em, uh, get, communicate with families directly.
Okay. Um, Ms. Rivera Colom?
Just have a question, if a family has, has, has any certain, uh, or anything that needs a different act. And, uh, actual transportation, they actually have to go out of their way to, I don't know, climb over a sidewalk in order to be able to get to, or that kind of thing? Who do they talk to to be able to make it safer for them to actually be able to get on the sidewalk?
Um, I would start with, I would start with the principal and somebody at the school. Normally, if there is something like that, um, either they have something in their IEP or they, there's five oh four, uh, uh, five oh four accommodations that, that, um, if it is in fact something that has to do with a, a disability or any type of challenge, um, those could be addressed through the five oh four accommodations, um, which they could start with their, their leader in their school. And then if they're, you know, if they're struggling to get answers, obviously they, anybody can email our office and we'd be happy to follow up.
Okay.
Check it.
Well, I, I need you to elaborate a little bit better. So if you're talking about, um, a student, let's say that they're in a wheelchair or they use crutches and they are picked up by either Vanpool that has wheelchair accessibility or the minibus that has wheelchair accessibility. To me, it would be common sense that you do not pick them up at a curbside. In fact, you would go move the van up forward a little bit more to where, you know, um, the sidewalk where it dips down that you can. So, that doesn't make sense and that does not have to be an IEP. It's, it's common sense that you do not try to push a wheelchair unless they pull into the parking space and then the wheelchair lift comes down that it, that then it blocks the, the curb, but.
I will elaborate, can I elaborate on this one?
Uh, Ms. Feliciano?
Because I asked for her advice on this, um, so I, again, everybody knows that I have moved, um, to the West Franklin area and I noticed neighbors of the street, um, the van, it's a two-way driveway. And so the van literally climbs the sidewalk and into, it's the weirdest thing. Because one, also, we're talking to the city council too because it's a structural, it's a sidewalk issue also. Um, but it's not safe for the child. They literally, um, you see the both parents literally carrying him onto this gravel driveway, which technically is not, it's not the house's driveway, it belongs to the city, which is a hidden, it's a hidden alley, which is really interesting. My concern is, saw, you know where that bump is, right? That's a dangerous intersection and then the way your van has to park off of your front is out and the kid is, the van is like in a diagonal way, so that if somebody was to take that turn, you'd be hit in a second.
Yeah, is it a Vanpool van?
It's, no, it's an, a white HPS. Is it the white ones? White ones? The ones, I think so. I'll find out.
We don't, I mean.
I don't know, it's, I just saw it, it's like a white van, but I will, uh, once school starts, I will. But it, it's, it is the freakiest thing ever and especially them trying to lift him on the wheelchair because one, structurally, the sidewalk is damaged due to the tree that grew. So there's no, the way their, their access of their, um, wheelchair ramp doesn't allow them to go fully into. So your van literally has to jump the curb in order to bump that, um, to get over that, that sidewalk bump and then the, the two-way gravel alley. It's crazy.
So if you can find out and then, and then just send.
Absolutely.
Um, Mr. Wellihan? Oh.
I just wanted to respond, like, in, in a like very specific scenario like that where a family feels like what the bus company is doing is not safe, they should contact the transportation department so that we could work with the company to, to come up with an alternative pickup. When it's door-to-door though, like, that's door-to-door, so if there's, you know, if, if the option is not there to say, okay, just walk to the corner and it's safer there, then, and it's a structural issue, then that, that is certainly like a city thing that we have to.
I did, um, definitely talk to the families after I saw it a couple of times. Um, the family has reached out to their city council and it's been sitting, the sidewalk repair has been sitting in subcommittee, so it hasn't really moved. Um, but I do wanna commend the driver and the monitor because it, it has nothing, like I said, they are willing to help this family out. And so I think the family just gave up and said, it is what it is. And we have the monitor and the driver who lifts up our son in the wheelchair. So, I, I was just like, yeah.
But I will say, you know, just. In the big picture, it becomes a liability issue.
Yeah.
Um, it, it, we feel great that, you know, that they're helping, but then something happens, that goes out, the, the thankfulness goes out the window, so we have to be a bit realistic. Mr. Wellihan?
Yeah, thank you, um, I think the city council, they, they vetted this issue one of their sub, subcommittees six months ago or so. I think the homeowner was trying to get a second driveway installed to alleviate some of that turnaround issues. So I think it's, it was tabled, I'm not sure where it's sitting, but the city council was apprised of it. I'm not sure whether they came forward to the school committee after that or any response from us verbally or, uh, professionally, so, um, I know it, it's been, uh, ongoing for, for months.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wellihan. Mayor Garcia?
Can you send me a, a, a pic, a picture, text of, cause I, I know you've told me this issue before and when I drive up and down West Franklin, I'm like, which one is she talking, can you send me like a reminder text of the exact location so I can check it out? And that way like, you know, I can work with the city engineer and see how we can expedite this.
Yeah, no problem, I could do that.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to your presentation.
Yeah, and, um, so I just wanted to give, uh, a huge, huge, huge shout-out to our facilities team over the summer. This has been the busiest summer that our, our facilities team has ever been a part of. Um, and I'm really happy when I drive around to schools to see all of the improvements that we've been making. Uh, thankfully, we've, you know, we have, we had Esser as a resource to be able to, uh, take care of some things that have just been neglected for so many years. Um, but I can't, you know, uh, that, it wasn't just about funding, it was a lot of collaboration amongst our facilities team and, and different local vendors in the area that have really stepped up in the summer and in a short amount of time when we're rezoning and moving so many different things, we've been able to, uh, accomplish a lot in terms of facilities upgrades. The picture that you see here is the vestibule that is being built at Sullivan to help increase the safety of, of when we get visitors. On the next, uh, slide, you can see another picture of some of the exterior work that we've done at, at Sullivan School. Um, in the next slide, you can also see the, the courtyard. Um, all of these are, are just like, look at how beautiful that looks. Um, and it's not even fully completed, but, um.
I apologize. How do we plan to utilize this more than what, like, you know, than what we've utilized courtyards?
Yeah, I think there's, there's, like, it's much more inviting to walk there, there's benches, so I'm sure that, um, the school's gonna use it um, in, in creative ways. I don't, you know, I, I wasn't prepared to talk about exactly how they're gonna use it, but.
I'll ask.
Um, that's a good question for Rue and we can certainly, um, if, make sure that gets that information out. Um, on the next slide, uh, take a look at the, the Morgan entrance, how beautiful it looks. Um, there used to be this, uh, space off to the right that was just overgrown and in addition, what you don't see here is that's the main entrance to get into Morgan. Um, they're also gonna have a safety vestibule where visitors can walk through and they won't have access to the building. Right now, when you walk into Morgan, you have access to the whole building. Um, and, you know, they're, they're doing away with that. But, um, this is just like so beautiful and I wanted to share it. On the next slide, you see, uh, a, a before pic? Um, I don't, so like, I don't know, yes, this is Lawrence and it looked even worse, cause that's already when work started being done. Um, I will say, when I see this picture, all I could think about is Dr. Dreik, uh, because he was, he went bananas over like, he hated this space so much. And we just never really had the resources, um, to, to really invest in it. So on the next slide, you'll see what it looks like. Our kindergarteners, this is our kindergarten space, so, uh, right, these classrooms here are all of our kindergarten spaces. Uh, they've never had a playground to play, like, whenever they played, they would play in their classroom. And now they have this beautiful space that's usable. Um, and, you know, we still got so much work to do everywhere, like, I, in, included in your packet, we have a list of all the major projects that we've done, which include gym floor resurfacing. Um, we're gonna be getting new windows at Lawrence and at McMahon and, um, a portion of Dunahue. I know Dunahue's working on getting a playground for that neighborhood. I was talking to the principal, yes, uh, at the back-to-school event and they're just so thrilled that that's gonna happen. Um, there's some, and, and thanks to the mayor and the CDBG, uh, money that we were able to, uh, we're able to move forward with that. It's not gonna be ready for the start of the school year, but, um, it's gonna happen. So, um, I, I included a, a list, but I just wanted to share one huge one that is going on, um, uh, and I was inspired by like, every time I go to Puerto Rico, I see these, uh, basketball courts that are enclosed. They're actually outdoors, but, um, you know, it's so hot in Puerto Rico that, uh, they didn't have any shade or anything, they wouldn't be playing, uh, basketball. So Sullivan is gonna get a huge structure, which, you know, we were able to tie into, um, Esser because that, that's outdoor, uh, functional space that students can, out in the rain and still have shelter in the basketball court. And when it's really, really hot, they can still play, so, um, it's something that I'm really excited to see come to fruition. It's, uh, I've been talking about it for two years and it's gonna happen. And that's not just for the school, but that neighborhood in general is gonna be able to utilize that space as opposed to, you know, walking all the way down to Resnick Boulevard from Jarvis and, and Bolden. They'll have their own beautiful, uh, basketball court, um, that, that, uh, that I, I just can't wait to see what it looks like.
Ms. Brunel?
Curious if you know a completion date for that?
Um, I can get that information, yes, but I don't have that right now. Um, Sam, if you could just put that on our, like, follow-up.
Ms. Wilson?
So I just wanna recognize, um, you know, I live right by Ian White and the amount of work that's been done is truly remarkable. Um, it does make an impact when families are gonna be driving into all of our schools. They're gonna see the care from the outside and not just from the teachers in the classrooms. They're gonna have pride in their community school because of the work that was done. And also, I wanna recognize everyone who's worked over the summer with the rain that we had. I can't imagine how they were able to pull off everything they ha- they have done. So I really wanna commend everyone for their hard work.
Thank you. Mr. Calamore?
Yeah, along with what Kelly's saying, uh, I've been touring schools this summer and looking at all this wonderful stuff that's going on. Right now, they're working at Metcalf School, they're doing an excellent job with furniture, setting up classrooms. And we should, we really should commend our staff for the hard work they did this summer. This, this is an improvement, this is wonderful.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Ms. Soto, did you?
Did I put what? Yeah, we worked, Sam, Sam and I worked together to get the package.
I would just like to say, a lot of work went into this and it's almost like the Bible that we need. And any question that a parent asks us, it's, I, I really enjoyed reading it. So thank you so much, I know a lot of work went into it and I'm sure a lot of changes, the only room in this world is room for improvement. However, I could turn to this and answer anything a parent.
Yeah, oh, Mr. Calamore?
One other thing, uh, within the next couple of weeks, I think you should go look at Robert's Steel Company. They're just completing it now and they're, it's wonderful, it's a wonderful job this company is doing. There are a few issues that we're talking about that wanna have straightened out before they move on and everyone's gone and here we are stuck with some of these problems. We're, we're, we're working on those right now that have them ready for maybe school opening, but we're working.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Calamore.
Alright, moving on to staffing update. On the next slide, um, included in your packet, you had a breakdown of our, uh, teaching vacancies. We have a total of sixty-eight vacancies. Uh, twenty-two of them are in special education and twelve of them are in elementary. And I just wanted to, to point out that this is, you know, we're, we're dealing with the staffing shortage similar to how we were dealing with it last year, but our schools, you know, I, I, our building leaders are resilient, our staff are resilient. And, um, you know, it's not ideal, but I, I, I did wanna shed light that in twenty nineteen, we had about five thousand three hundred and twenty-seven students and only four hundred and ninety-five teachers. Um, so, uh, this upcoming school year, despite having all of these vacancies, we still have more teachers, um, five hundred and fifty-one with less students. Um, a lot of the, a lot of the commitment that we've made, um, in our new staffing model is to make sure that we create grade-level teams with, um, English language learner teachers and special education teachers, um, a part of each grade-level team and, and, you know, um, we're, unfortunately, we're, you know, we, we fall short being able to fully implement what our plans, uh, would be for staffing because of these vacancies. Um, but again, I, you know, uh, each school is working with their, um, executive director, school leadership to come up with contingency plans on, on, on making sure that, uh, with the staff that we do have, that we're, we're able to, uh, receive our students with open arms and, and get a strong start to the school year. Um, and we'll continue our efforts, I mean, we're recruiting daily, we just, you know, uh, Jackie Gleschin just shared a post on Facebook for paraprofessionals and, uh, we went from zero applicants to twenty-six in a matter of a, a couple of days, so, um, every day, we, you know, we're gonna continue to try to work with our principals to fill the vacancies that we have. We're working on a virtual job fair that, that for HPS, um, working with paraprofessionals who might be interested in, in teaching and, and supporting them in any way that we can and, and where applicable. Um, you know, again, speech is gonna be another issue. Uh, psychologists, we just had another resignation recently, so, um, looking at outside agencies to see if they can help. It's, it's, um, it's a, you know, it, it's tough when you go down that route because, you know, you, you end up paying triple what, what you would if you could find the staff to do it. But, uh, we wanna do everything we can to, uh, to meet the needs of our students. So those options are not off the table and we're, we're working with our partners to try to, to try to get some staff to, to fill these, some of these voids.
Mr. Wellihan?
Real quick, thank you. Um, mentioned the virtual job fair, was there like a live one this year? I know last year the numbers were really down. Springfield's were down, I.
We didn't host our own, but we participated in different ones. Um, the last time we hosted our own was, uh, not this year, the ye- uh, last year. And we ended up getting, when we normally get over a hundred people to show up and we ended up getting ten people, uh, show up and like two potential candidates, um, so our, our leaders.
Springfield's was down too, I remember Springfield just said they usually get a hundred and they only had twenty-five or, yeah, so, okay. I remember Springfield just said they usually get a hundred and they only had twenty-five or yeah, so, okay, just asking, thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
Um, people's services with five, is that what the reference is to like speech and language and the school psychologist?
Yeah, if it says, uh.
Vacancies?
Yes.
Thank you.
Those are like uh, district positions.
That's why I was just double checking.
Settle, I, I mean, I could, we have the, the backup details to all of this, so. There's any uh, uh, more detailed information that you'd like to see, we'd be happy to send it along.
Thank you.
I just have a question on um, these different programs that. Uh, Teach Western Mass, Teach for America and this I A G group where we didn't meet the qualifications. Can you just talk a bit about that?
Yeah, um, so Teach Western Mass wasn't about qualifications. It was just. Them as an organi- uh, as an organization, they decided to cancel their residency program. Um, so what they've normally do is they take people that aren't, that, that haven't taught before. You know, business person, but you're interested in, in the teaching field, join a residency program with them and they. Give you like some hardcore professional development on what it takes to be a teacher. And they, they place you in Holyoke Public Schools. Uh, to, to get your licensure and do all of that. So it's not your typical. Um, you know, teacher that went to school for teaching and, and uh, it's taking people that. Um, that haven't taught before, but are interested in it and, and getting them on, on a path to, to teach. They did away with that similar, for the same reasons that we're. Dealing with these vacancies, um. Staffing is just really hard and it's hard for them to fund a program like that, um, when there's not a lot of candidates out there, so. Um, and then I A G, the, that was um, you know, we were getting some, some teachers from Spain there. I believe, um, and working with uh. Uh, working with the state to do that, but the, the, the contract that I A G has, um. For some reason, they just, you know, there was some language in there that prohibited them from working in. Um, I can get you the specifics from our H R director, um, but. But that, that's really what that was about. I, I wouldn't say that that generated any, you know, a large amount of candidate. Did get some for our dual language program passed, but um, it's just. A lot of these companies that create pipelines, um, they're trying to find where, you know, where the partnerships. Land them the most placements and working with those districts.
Uh, Ms. Brunel?
Please be sure to email that.
I'll get you the, I'll get you the, the requirement that.
Okay, awesome. Please do so.
Sam, you got that? Um, and then the, the last, I think it's the last thing on, on. Yeah, on superintendent report. Um, it was just a quick update on our, the strategic plan. Um, you've seen a lot of these metrics, um. Some of them we covered last year about around the graduation rate. And growth data with, that we shared every quarter, um. Three percent of our students enrolled in advanced coursework. Uh, we all know how, how, how much Dean has grown over the last years. Remember when I first got here, there were, you know, a hundred and, I wanna say. Hundred and fifty students or so, and now we're closer to four hundred students and. Get the new middle school, we, we, we could potentially grow that, um, if it makes sense. Uh, we've expanded pre-K seats, um, uh. Definitely have expanded uh, pre-K seats significantly and enrolled about seven hundred students. In a dual language program, which represents about twenty percent of our uh, population. Uh, some newer ones, you know, everyone knows we got a, a brand new middle school. Uh, that, 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 that is on the horizon. We'll give a brief update as to where we're at with that project. And then um, I've been using this twenty million dollar number, but I think it's time we go out. Really dig into that because I know we've done way more than twenty million dollars in infrastructure investment. Uh, thanks to the M S B A and their accelerated repair projects. Thanks to the, the city council for. For, you know, funding their portion of those projects and just over the years, you know, uh. Making sure that, you saw a bunch of slides, uh, making sure that we're taking care of our buildings and upgrading them, so. Um, I wanna just give an update. There's more accomplishments that we have on our website.
Ms. Wilson?
Clarification again, what does M L L stand for?
Multi lan- multi-language learners.
And S W D is Students with Disabilities?
Yes.
Just trying to make sure that everyone at home also understands.
Thank you. And the, the next slide is uh, where we landed with all of the benchmarks that we. We set out for last year. We, we at least partially met all of them. Um, ten of them we met fully and then seven we partially met. And I would say like, I'm really proud of the team. Um, a lot of like, like, we said, this is what we're gonna set out to do. And I'm confident that like, everything we set out to do, we did. Where I couldn't rate us as meeting. Fully is that uh, when you, those are all inputs that I'm talking about. When you, but when you look at the outputs. Um, we didn't quite get to where we wanted to in each of these benchmarks. Um, I'll give you an example. You know, we wanted uh, to, our, our mentoring program, we wanted to. Uh, reach at least twenty-five students and we were only able to reach eight. So while we did launch the program and we did engage in a mentorship program. Uh, our, our goal was to get at least twenty-five students and. Got a really late launch and then it was really hard to find mentors and find, and match students. Um, and, and I hope to have a stronger launch um, next year, you know. Areas like, you know, we, we had a, we had a goal in there to get a ten-point increase. Uh, for staff reporting, uh, positive work environment. We didn't quite get to ten points. We got to six points. Um, so while we, we did make some, an, an effort and, and put all these things that we said we were gonna put into place. Um, the, the outputs weren't, the outcomes weren't actually there that we'd like to see, so. That's why some of them are, are just partially uh, met, but uh, one thing that I'll say about our leadership team and. And especially in academics and curriculum under Dr. Mahoney's leadership, um. Is that we're, we're reflective and we're, you know, flexible. We don't just sit here and, and. Say, oh, that's the plan, that's the plan, and we have to stick to the plan. Like, if there's ways to make it better and if there's ways to build off of. Some of the successes that we've seen, uh, the team is super reflective of, of really looking at what's working and then. Uh, and then uh, taking a look at, at next year and, and coming up with some. Um, strong goals that reflect some of the learning that we have over the years. So. Really appreciate his leadership and what he's done with his team and how flexible they are and just, um. Just always striving for continuous improvement. And we've taken, you know, uh, last year and, and uh, based on lessons learned and based on the strategic plan. Uh, subgroups that have met and been meeting all, you know, over the summer and even late last spring. Um, to, to identify what our top priorities are, top priority strategies are for next year and that's. Uh, that starts on the next slide. So we're gonna continue to uh, focus on early literacy and we'd like to. By June twenty twenty-four, we'd like to have eighty percent of our K to two teachers, um, consistently implementing strong early literacy practices. And we're gonna measure that through the H P S tool, um, that we've created and modified over, over the last year. And then um, strengthening tier one instruction. Um, we have uh, three benchmarks there. Uh, we, we hope that ninety-five percent of grade three to five. E L A and S L A teachers consistently implement the new curriculum that we have as measured by the walkthrough. So when we're doing our walkthroughs. That's one of the things that we're looking at to make sure they're using the, the, the curriculum and implementing it with fidelity. Um, we hope that eighty-five percent of our teachers consistently implement the high impact strategies. Uh, from the H P S instructional program. And again, that's um, something that we're gonna track using our H P S walkthrough tool. Um, and our expectation is that a hundred percent of our school leaders and expert teachers. Uh, provide classroom-based coaching weekly and lead a cycle of planning and data meetings. Um, with consideration for learner variability. Um, so our leaders are, have already gone through. Um, a relay training for inclusive schools, uh. Uh, it's called the Isley Institute, School Leadership Institute. Um, we, we identified inclusion as, as a priority for next year. And, and schools definitely implemented some of that based on how they knew. Uh, how to do it or what they thought was best practice. But this year, we're gonna do a lot more professional learning. Around um, best practice for inclusive schools. Um, so uh, we hope that that translates to. You know, better co-teaching and just making sure that, you know, we continue the work that we're doing, but also. Uh, make it uh, stronger for, for students that, that might need some scaffolding supports or additional supports. Um, the last two on the next slide are around inclusion and whole child. You can see that ninety-five percent of our instructional leaders are gonna complete the year-long. In uh, Inclusive School Leadership Institute. And we hope that eighty-five percent of our teachers. Uh, complete six modules um, on accelerated learning. We've built this. Um, and inclusive practices. We built this into the professional development calendar, so it's a part of our, our contract with Relay and Isley. Uh, to make sure that all of our classroom teachers are getting this professional learning that's gonna give them more tools. Um, and, and, and uh, to, for, for better inclusive practices. And then we hope that eighty percent of our classrooms are consistently implementing best inclusive practices. Um, and we'll measure that again as we, as we walk through classrooms. Um. This last one is around, actually, it's not the last one, so. I, we have one more on the next slide, but uh, by September twenty, twenty twenty-three, we wanna launch the H P S learner profile. Um, and, and that was a part of the strategic plan. We wanna make sure that schools consistently. You know, model culture and what they, you know, um, uh, you know, schools tend to create their own acronyms for like. You know, what they wanna see in a student, but we've done a lot of work around the reach profile, so. Uh, schools are all gonna be using something that's consistent and lifting this reach profile. Uh, throughout the year. And this is something that I, I think is long overdue too, is. Making sure that our student support staffs or our deans of students, um, and, and the student support teams. That they're getting, you know, oftentimes they felt like excluded from a lot of the professional development. Cause uh, a lot of the focus was around curriculum and instruction. And uh, this year we may, we're making a concerted effort to make sure that those teams are getting really strong professional development. Um, in, in, in the work that they do every day. Um, and lastly, uh, under educated, under the educator development priority. Uh, it, we, we're gonna strive for eighty percent of all of our staff. Uh, to engage in at least two of the equity learning sessions. We did one last year, hope to do at least two this year. We're gonna continue uh, the work with the Equity Task Force and them meeting bi-monthly. Uh, to support implementation of uh, equity recommendations, um. Thank to those school committee members that have participated in the past and that will continue to participate on that task force. Um, and then by June twenty twenty-four, all building and district leaders. Will have led at least ten turnkey equity sessions uh, for their school teams. So uh, now that we have uh, Mr. Mogell in his role as the Executive Director. Of, of ec- uh, Equity Diversity and Inclusion, he's gonna be able to better support. All of our principals in some of the professional learning that we wanna see at the building level. Um, he wasn't able to do that obviously as a full-time principal and, and helping support this work um, part-time. Last year, but now that, that he's stepping into this role full-time, uh, we, we really have, uh, uh, have an opportunity here to. To better support our leaders in, in some of the professional learning. That's all I had for the um. For the superintendent's report.
I have um, some questions. Ms. Tensley Williams? Now, you're gonna talk to.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The anti-bullying campaign that you will head up in June, uh, um. Are you going to have, I hate the word data, but to talk to the parents maybe about the kids that are being bullied? Um, how are you gonna do that? You're gonna send a qu- a questionnaire to the parents or how are you gonna do it?
Yeah, we have a whole project planned around the launching the campaign. It's. It's more what we're gonna do at the district level to help support the work that's already happening in schools like. Uh, this isn't to say that schools haven't been already, you know, addressing bullying issues and talking to families, but. At the district level, we saw a lot of success in um, you know, the attendance campaigns and the things. Gotta help. It's part of our role.
Right.
District leadership is helping our principals, not just telling them, hey, go do this. So. One of the things that, that we wanna do and, and, and Josh actually. Uh, Josh and I have, have talked a lot about is at the district level. Uh, launch in uh, an anti-bullying campaign. So we're in the process right now of identif- similar to. How we did with the attendance campaign, attend today, achieve tomorrow. We're looking at like, what are, what are those slogans that we can have? What's the professional learning that we can gauge families in and staff in and, and, and support the work?
The other question that I have for you is, um, do you have, um, uh, some success already with this bullying program?
Uh, no, we, we, we haven't launched it yet. We're in the process of. Making sure that, that, uh, that starts up. I'm hoping.
Okay, good.
By October, we have something, middle of, middle of September.
Thank you.
Ms. Brunel?
Are we gonna, um, like, as a sub, as a school committee dive into the evaluation at all?
Um, that's in our pocket? On the agenda. Down here. Alrighty. It's one of them days, right? It's all good. Um. Alrighty, if there's no further questions, um, the other thing that's in your pocket was updates on new leadership. It was an F Y I. It's just for your, your information. It's not like you have any decision over it. Um, he's just being nice enough to let us know. Um, Mr. Collmore?
Anthony, can you tell me just, just briefly, uh. What kind, what the funding is for COVID and. What are the qualifications?
I can share what, what we've shared in the finance subcommittee. Um, I don't wanna misspeak, but I think we've received. So don't quote me on this, please. I would just say, I believe we've received about fifty-four million dollars in total. Between Esser, uh, one, Esser two and Esser three. Um, Esser one and two expired at the, at the end of this past year, at the end of the summer. And Esser three, we have up till uh, next summer. So the end of next summer is when Esser three expires and. We've spent a lot of it on P P E. We've spent a lot of it on, um. On S E L supports on our counselors. If we hadn't had Esser money, we would have seen a significant amount of. Um, layoffs that year that Esser came out. Uh, almost, I would say a hundred percent of our counselors were, were, were funded on Esser for the first year when we got it. Um, cause we had seen a, a, a state cut in our, in our funding. Um, because the state was kinda shut down for, for, for as long as it was and then uh. Luckily, we got an influx of these Esser dollars. Anything specifically you'd like me to talk about as it relates to Esser? Or these COVID funds?
Yeah, just, uh. I want to find out. There anything in there that we can use use that money in for. Upgrading our schools?
A lot of the projects that you just looked at today were so. The only requirement is when you're doing a capital improvement with Esser funds, they require you to submit. A separate application to the state to give you approval to use it, and you have to tie it somehow to. Somehow to to to, you know, health and health-related. So like windows, we're able, we just, we're going to. Funding half of the window project allocated two million dollars to that to get new windows at. At Dunahue, at McMahon and at Lawrence next summer. PPE, obviously, we've been doing. Giving out masks and making sure our nurses have all the equipment that they need, the dividers, all of that stuff. We've been, you know, we've used Esser funding for, but upgrading schools. And capital improvements, you just got to get special permissions, which we've for all the projects that we've used Esser for, gotten that that approval.
What I'm referring to is. Can we? I don't know if we can or not. Can we use some of this money to supplement? The building of their new packed school?
No. But what I did instead of doing that is instead of going to the city council and asking them to fully fund the window projects. We've allocated two million dollars of Esser to do that because it it's, you know, I could justify using Esser for air quality. Windows and stuff like that, but building the new school, the the state wouldn't approve that.
Okay, because middle school building update was in here, so I guess you gave the update. Oh, so there's more? Okay. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. I'm not sure what this. This first part means on the agenda. Are you telling me or are you saying something with this, but it's? Compliance with Mass General Law, Section thirty-seven P of General Law, Chapter seventy-one, requires superintendents, including leaders of Commonwealth Charter Schools. To annually report to DESI the cost of assigning school resource officers if they have SROs. And a description of this district or schools proposed budget for mental, social and emotional health support personnel. So are you just giving me an FYI about that or what is this?
I I want to go on record and I want it to be reflected in the minutes that we've complied with this law. By sharing that information. So on the next slide that Sam will put up. I'm sharing with the community through this body that we do have two SROs and the. The salary for those SROs next year is about a hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Writing yes for two. So one of them is at Holyoke High North Campus and the other one is at. The proposed budget for mental, social. Or emotional health support personnel for FY for next school year is about three point five million dollars. And that's just, you know, I know that we could probably come up with more that fits into this bucket, but we limited it to. You know, our our Title IX compliance manager, our director of student support services. Any autism specialists or BCBAs. Our school adjustment counselors and our student support coordinators as well as our as our deans of students. So. All of those, all of that comes up to three point five million. I'm sure we can go through our budget and and. Find other items that might fit into that bucket of work, but. Just on the surface, that that's the projected cost for for those services and. The other thing that we're required to report publicly on is the number of school-based arrests, citations or court referrals and. There there were zero of those.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel.
Hundred and sixty thousand dollars between people is over eighty thousand dollars per person. That's more than what our administrative staff. I'm not saying SROs aren't important. But they're not as important as teachers or repair professionals or administrators or the other staff. So I just personally. That's a lot, and I think moving forward for next year, that needs to be renegotiated. That's all.
Any other questions? Mr. Kennedy.
Is the so for the. Budget for the mental, social, emotional health support personnel, is that more than last year? Because I don't know, I don't know if it's been like documented or noticed, but the. With the massive mental health drop in students, thanks to, you know, the excessive testing and now the one thing that is. The one device that we can use to, you know, get out of the successive testing for five minutes that's being taken away. I have a feeling it's going to drop just a little bit more. So is that more than last year? Because I know that our guidance departments last year were flooded even with the Esser support.
Yeah, we have more counselors in this upcoming year's budget than we did in the previous year. And. Added deans of students to our our allocations for schools that didn't have them. So yes, that is more than last year.
Any other questions? Okay. So, okay, so thank you for that. That's it for that information?
Yes, that's it for the whole present.
Now. To understand this even further. We have here the dean admission policy, the yonder bag, the high school attendance, no credit policy. High school schedule blocks. Is that to refer it to committee? What or?
I I added them to the agenda because we'd like to engage the. School committee in discussion and I I would have hoped that. Through your guidance, you would refer it to whatever subcommittee you think is the right subcommittee. What I don't want is for us to implement these things and then school committee to say like. Why weren't we notified? So I'm trying to, there's some of this is a little time sensitive, but I want to make sure that. You all have the opportunity to weigh in on this, and I think that that should happen in subcommittee, but I.
Okay, no, I was I wasn't sure. So that's why I wanted to make sure that that's what I'm what I'm going to be asking here. So. I would entertain a motion. Because I think this might have to be. Like there there might be two committees that will have to be combined. Working together and it's going to be the diversity, equity and inclusion as well as the policy subcommittee. But that's why I'm.
Which?
And I'm going to tell you right now, the dean admission policy. The high school attendance, no credit policy. And I'm trying to look at this high school block thing. But I'm I'm not. I'm not really sure about that one. What I'm more. More concerned where I would like to see both committees working together to ensure equity. When we're looking at both those things would be the dean admission policy and the high school attendance, no credit policy. So I would entertain a motion to refer. To the policy subcommittee and diversity, equity, inclusion committee to work together. On reviewing both the dean admission policy and the high school attendance, no credit policy. For discussion and recommendations to the superintendent slash receiver. So I have a motion by Ms. Brunel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Feliciano. Is there any discussion? Ms. Wilson.
So the yonder bag initial, the policy was. You know, already sent and we already made recommendations, so we'll be kind of doing that same mindset. I would think with the other recommendations as putting the positives before the negatives. As well as using the gender neutral term of they. When referencing the term students and not he or she. So I'm just letting everyone know that that's probably going to be in our thoughts as well. As well as I can see right now. I would like the thought of having some rewards and not just consequences put into place for the use of yonder bags.
I didn't do the yonder bag yet.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm just, I I was talking just on the dean admission policy and the high school attendance, no credit policy. To take those two policies together to refer. To the diversity, equity and inclusion and the policy subcommittee to work together. So it wouldn't be separate meetings. It would be. But hold on, that might be a problem. Because now that becomes a quorum.
Or it does become a quorum.
Okay. That would be the only other possibility would be that both subcommittees discuss it and then the two chairs. It's not going to work. It's not going to work. We shouldn't be discussing anything amongst one another anyways. Independently, Ms. Wilson.
I would just say that each committee reviews it through their lens. And we bring it back to full committee with what we've just looked at from our lens and then we create. A flow of the documents based upon both subcommittee's perspectives.
I like that idea. Ms. Brunel? Okay, so then here's what we're going to do. So the motion will entertain a motion. So first, do we have a, we'd have to withdraw that previous motion. Or you can do an amendment.
I'd like to do an amendment to my motion and. Suggest that we refer both the dean admission policy and the high school attendance slash no credit policy. To both the. Diversity, inclusion and equity subcommittee and the policy subcommittee to discuss at their own. Subcommittees and then come back to the full body with recommendations through their committee lenses.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Fave.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Vera Colom?
Yes.
Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. And now for the yonder bag high. School schedule blocks. Is that another one that you wanted referred as well? Okay.
Yes.
All right, so the yonder bag and the high school schedule blocks, I would entertain a motion to refer to the policy subcommittee. So motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Mr. Wallahan. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Noel?
Yes.
Mr. Omero. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Vera Colom?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wallahan?
Yes.
Mr. Callamore?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Great. Next on the agenda is receiver superintendent evaluation. You all had the opportunity to review. The evaluation provided by Commissioner Riley in regards to superintendent slash receiver. Mr. Soto. His annual evaluation. Are there any questions? This is just us reviewing it and that's it. It's. Just what it is. Ms. Brunel.
Does anybody know you or Ms. Soto? If there's a way that we could make a suggestion to DESI or the commissioner to also evaluate like. Like specifically as a. As a performance goal. I know we focused on student growth in our turnaround plan. So I know that it's something the district is focusing on and not so much as just like MCAS scores and, you know, graduation rate, but how much is the. You know, I know I saw it in here somewhere, like the one and a half year, you know, one and a half time reading and math and things like that. So I would like to see that evaluated more in this tool if we could somehow make that suggestion for the next. Year or something that we as a body keep an eye on maybe quarterly throughout the. Here, but I would just like to see that included moving forward if there's if there's any way to do that.
I would just say it it was included as a part of. Ultimately, how they evaluated. So on a quarterly basis, we provided. Star growth data and students making one point three years worth of growth. So. All of those reports that the school committee got quarterly, the the state did as well. And they looked at, you know, a section of this is priorities and goals, which included. All of the projects that 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 I just reported out on, and it also includes what next year's. Metrics and all of that are. So if there's, I I would say, yeah, absolutely. If there are. You know, if you look at our proposed benchmarks for next year and all of the met metrics that we have in our strategic plan. Which everyone has had an opportunity to say, hey, I want this metric in there. I want that metric. Growth data is in that. And that's something that we report on regularly to at least quarterly plus at our strategic plan refinement. Sessions with with some may be part of. So they take all of that information and then and then. Create this evaluation based on. Some of those qualitative and quantitative metrics.
Like since the pandemic and since all that loss that not only Holyoke specifically, but the city. The Commonwealth, you know, the region, the nation, everybody saw. It would be nice to kind of. Not look back before that and then just like hyper-focus on our growth since then. So and like, I feel like that's what the community looks for. And when you're talking about all these points, like it just think like if that was specifically highlighted. Then it would be an easier reflection on how the district's doing because we all, that's what matters most, right? Is our students' growth from from where they came to us in September to where they left us in June, right? We can't ultimately control. Where they were before September. Can't, you know, make some magic bean and get them way up here on grade level if they're down here. But what are we doing for students to help them grow? I would just like to see that specifically. Mentioned as a as a performance goal, as a. Evaluated metric, I guess is the right word in this, so that way the community can read it. And get that information more easily, like looking through this, it's it's hard to gather. And I feel like ultimately, that's what we're judged on, right? We're ultimately judged on how our students are doing. So I just feel like that's an easier read if we could get that in there as a more formal talk.
Yeah, I would say, you know. The final end of year update that we're preparing to share with. Like all of those me- metrics and then on a quarterly basis. The data that we do have available, all of those metrics are in there. We're going to report out.
Yeah, no, I know, but I want DESI. I want DESI. Highlighted, right? Because they're ultimately our governing body at the end of the day when whether or not we get out of. So I know you bring it to us. I want to make sure they're seeing it, that they're evaluating it and they're recognized. And I don't know that a hundred percent. I mean, I can gather, right? But like, really, like, isn't this what matters most? Like, this is what we need. So I mean, I'll email members myself, but it's just a thought of like, that is me like. How really are we doing, right? How did Johnny do this year and Kimberly and Jose and Olivia, right? That's. So it was just like easier to read, I think, had that that focus talking point. That's all.
I will say that. One of the things I want to recognize that the state. Recognizes that. Growth is one of the most important things in a community and they recognize. That and I don't, I I hate to keep mentioning the pandemic, but. I'm going to mention it again. They recognize that statewide, it's going to take some time to bounce back from that. And I say that because when they release their their new updated accountability. They they just did that. they just did that in the summer. One of the, one of the things that they did is they grouped specific districts and students into categories based on we expect this group of students to make this progress over three years, and we expect this group of students to make this progress over five years, four years. So they're really like, they're really like being aware that, that this isn't just gonna get fixed in a year. And that it's gonna take some time. So I'd be happy, you know, to draft a communication on that because our Jenny Malave, our data team manager, she does a really good job. She's like, she's our guru around understanding the state accountability system. And she was able to put together a short presentation for her cabinet on like, what do these changes mean? What's accountability system look like? So.
Yeah, I would love a report on that. And when did that come out?
That came out, uh, we just met on it over the summer. So I would say late, late, late last year, early in the summer. I can get you that information.
Well, I would say that we need to request an adaptation to our turnaround plan if the state's adjusting their growth percentage. Last time our turnaround plan was reissued was December of 2022. And if the state's now issuing new growth standards, we didn't make sure we're accounting for that. We're still being held to other standards, right? And so we want our schools back. We need to ensure that we're being held accountable to those new standards. So I would like a report on that by our next school committee meeting. And then on the agenda, I would like some discussion following up from that on how we go about based on what we're seeing, requesting a adjustment, a review of, a new look, give us back our schools conversation with the commissioner to see how we adjust our turnaround plan that, if I'm not mistaken, was adopted for three years, which puts us at 2025. And if there's new growth percentages that we need to be looking at, then that definitely needs What is that you? I want to report about the Desi rec, uh, new growth, what do you call it?
It's not group, they just gave out some guidance on the accountability system.
Okay.
During the pandemic, during the pandemic, like all of that was on hold. They were holding districts harmless to changing levels. Well, they didn't change our levels. But like moving, moving a school district from level two to level three or level four, like that was on hold during the pandemic. And then they, they, so then they got together, Desi did, and the state board, and they gave guidance on like, how, like how they're gonna be looking at school districts, the accountability. I'd be happy to share that communication that came from the state. And then I can, I can certainly, we, we had Jenny create like presentation on it that she can record and send it. Jenny Malave, our data manager.
Oh, okay, all right. I just have one more point I want to make and then we can move on. So the state put on hold downgrading any district, but had no problem reissuing a turnaround plan for Hoyo in December of 2022, when we're still gathering data of the harm of the pandemic. Just putting that as my last comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. We're gonna go ahead and move on to middle school building update, providing that one.
Um, it's in your packet. There's not a ton to report other than, I don't know, do you want to take?
Sure.
Yeah.
I don't know where it is in the packet, but I don't need to look at it. So we have a meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM. We're still meeting primarily on Zoom. We have a very large committee, so it's just easier that way. So we're still meeting on Zoom. We just got the demolition bids in. So those are going through their, don't ask me, the government words for being vetted and secured and signed off on. But we're happy to report, it looks like we're going with a local firm that came in wonderfully under budget. I'm sure we'll be confirming that this coming Thursday. And then they expect the, the bids back for building and stuff by the end of next week. And then those will be reconciled. So things are moving along nicely. We expect demo to begin in September. So we look forward to having a big ceremony to celebrate the start of that starting to come down. Other than that, I think things are progressing right along the same. We, we didn't really meet in July, just like we kind of didn't meet in July. There wasn't much to go over. But if any, anybody ever has anything specific they want to know about, feel free to reach out.
Any questions? Great. The next thing is review of use of Zoom for committee and council meetings. This is a referral to the joint school committee, city council about ongoing use of Zoom for school committee meetings for them to review, I guess. I'm gonna have Ms. Brunel talk a little bit on it.
Thank you. So I brought this up because it came to my intention that earlier this month, Zoom updated their policies. And if we're gonna continue to use Zoom publicly, I think the public needs to be notified of the updated policies that Zoom has that now include owning your recognition for AI and such things. So I just thought it was an important time to review Zoom's policy. So that way, city council and school committee are both meeting their legal obligation and how we notify the public of what their image could potentially be being used for. But secondly, like, do we really need I don't know what else, if there's other options that have more lenient policies. But that came to my attention. I thought it was important to discuss, so.
Sorry. And now with a lot of talks about AI, even about looking at policies, referring to that, but we'll put that on for next month's agenda. But it's here. A lot of students are using chat. Chat. So whatever. I haven't tried it yet. Maybe I should. Maybe I'll sound a little bit more intelligent. I'm just saying. Mr. Callamore?
Are we gonna refer this to policy?
It's refer to joint.
Heard it.
School committee. No, I haven't. I'm, I'm saying that this is what this whole thing's about. But I, I saw that you had a question and I saw Ms. Wilson's hand raised as well, so. I haven't entertained the motion yet. I guess you guys just. Ms. Wilson?
Well, I guess my other question is around subcommittee meetings and the fact that we don't, we do not use Zoom during subcommittee meetings. Is that something that we are going to be doing going forward?
So technically, they had continued with the Zoom to provide for public access. And that's why we're referring this over to the joint school committee, sub, um, joint school committee, city council, because it's all, all public meetings?
Right, but I'm just speaking to the fact that our subcommittee meetings are not on, are not on Zoom. They are not presented to our public via Zoom. So I just wanted to clarify, are we talking about the full school committee meetings?
It would be any and all, because if I'm not mistaken, the diversity, equity, inclusion, the joint school committees, city council, they are using Zoom. So it would be all. So I entertain, okay?
I'd like to make a motion that we refer this to the joint school committee, city council meeting for further discussion on the legal policies of, you know, whatever, however you want to word it.
Second.
Prefer, refer it out to discuss further about
The use of, of Zoom for public meetings.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Ms. William, Tensley Williams. Any further discussion? No discussion. I do not have the mayor on any, anymore, so we can go ahead and take a voice vote. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Nope. Okay, motion passes. The next one is also to refer to the joint school committee, city council. And it's to discuss homelessness and drug use around the schools. It, I entertain a motion.
We'll move.
Do you want the motion first?
I need the motion first. So I have a motion by Mr. Callamore. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Brunel. Any discussion? Ms. Brunel, then Mr. Wallahan.
Yeah, real quick. So I happened to get a note from a parent who went by one of our buildings to show her entering preschooler and get her all excited and you know, what this mom had to witness on school grounds now granted it's summer is just unacceptable. So I happened to reach out to Mr. Soto and, you know, was like, you know, we've never really looked at this through the school committee's lens, right? The problems that our inner city is facing with homelessness and drug use. We've never really looked at it through our lens. So kid you not, I'm on the phone with him and two minutes after we hang up, he calls me back and someone who was sleeping on another one of our property grounds. So I reached out to him and the mayor and said, you know, we need to do something about this. I also reached out to Mildred to, you know, get this on our agenda. And I will have to give kudos to the mayor who instantly scheduled me a meeting with two captains at the police department. And we had a very nice sit down last week. We discussed potentially having auxiliary police attend the walking school buses just to be more present and more aware of what's happening. There are some other things that we discussed, like, for example, they just removed the bus stop on Cabot between Maple and High. They're intending to remove the bus stop on Maple that sits literally on Lawrence property. I was told the library is hiring security for the library park this year. And just a couple of different things and ideas we had. So I've since reached out to the principals at our three most inner city schools to just continue the conversation and how do we discuss this more? So it's a conversation I'd like to keep having on the school committee, but particularly with the council as well as they control policing budget, of course, as we know. But I just, real quick, also wanted to say, I loved your idea about ward meetings. And it's one of the things discussed in this meeting is the fact that ward meetings don't happen anymore. And so when you guys look to schedule your meetings, I would love to connect you with Captain Cruz. And he would probably love to have an officer at, you know, their availability, of course, attend some of these meetings or at least be a direct line post-meeting to hear about some of the concerns that come up. Thank you for adding this.
Absolutely. So I had a motion. Up, up, Mr. Wallahan.
Thank you for, thank you for the stop there. Yeah, just having the police involved. I know the pop-up tents on, on city, city parks. Mitchell Field, Veterans Field, you know, see the plus and pop-up tents there. It's a city property, plus a school property too. Just to mention the ward, ward meetings kind of went away due to her COVID issues. That's one of the reasons why. Thank you.
Yeah, they camp at, at Pulaski Park. It's okay. I look at it this way, we do need to address the homelessness. So it's about resources. So that's why it's very important for this. Ms. Tensley Williams?
I have a comment to make. Officer Cologne to Hoyo Police Department, he also works with Ed Case from the sheriff department. And I'm sure he would probably be happy to come to one of the meetings. In fact, I'll talk to him.
Thank you. So with no further discussion, a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Now moving on to meeting minutes, I'm gonna take these separate for a reason. So is there a motion to accept the meeting minutes of the school committee for May, and I should have written the date.
Fifteenth.
May 15th, I'm sorry. I know. I'm not prepared on that one. So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any discussion? Ms. Wilson?
Uh, yes. I would like Evan Kennedy's name to be spelled correctly under student reports. And I would like consistency with I, I Mrs. Wilson. So if we could use that throughout, that'd be lovely as well.
How come you didn't advocate for me?
Because I'm claiming myself only.
Well, you claimed Mr. Kennedy.
I think, but, but Ms., your name's not spelled correctly?
Okay. I've been many things.
Or is it the Mrs.?
No, it says Miss Lefevre. It's B V R E.
Oh, there it is.
I'm gonna be changing it soon. I'll let you guys all know. I'll invite you. But anyways. Yeah, so typo stuff, yeah, just, there's a few things, a few items on there that's a little bit typhoed. Anybody else? I know I had one thing and it's just gonna be on the part where it says delegate to the delegate assembly for MASCE conference. So motion set by Mr. Callamore, seconded by Ms. Tensley Williams to serve as a delegate, alternate delegate, but it wasn't that. It was, would have been Gustavo Romero. And it shows up later. I know, it was. I know. You could put in there, motion rescinded. Because that's what we did. And then we came up with the new motion, which then is there. Mr. Romero to serve as the alternate and at least Ms. Rivera-Cologne's name is spelled correctly. And and she's the delegate. Yeah, but that was the only thing. So with the corrections, is there a motion to accept the, the meeting minutes with the corrections?
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Motion to accept the minutes of June?
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. Thank you so much, Ms. Wilson. Do I have a second?
So moved. Oh.
Second. Seconded by Ms. Brunel. Any discussion?
Ditto for me, Mrs.
So it's typos. Okay.
Just, yeah, just clarifying, just the consistency.
Okay. All right, so with the, with corrections to the typo errors, is there, there's a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
So moved. Oh, sorry.
So motion by Mr. Callamore, seconded by Ms. Brunel. Oh, she found another one. Are you advocating for me?
I'm just asking a, I'm just asking a question when it comes down to the last page of the minutes and it has all the, we didn't review.
No, there was tabled.
It was tabled, and I don't see that it was tabled, the review of all of the policies.
Yeah. Does it?
Oh, to table, sorry. That's the one word I missed.
That's okay.
So sorry, thank you.
It's 7:51. It's all right. Okay. Any further discussion? So we had the motion by Mr. Callamore, seconded by Ms. Brunel. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. Now, I know that there was an, an error for the joint committee minutes. That, that's just an error on your agenda. There is no, no meeting minutes. Well, it's gotta go to their board.
But I don't have them yet.
Yeah, that's what we're saying. Yeah. Yeah. It's okay. And then on next is motion to, is I entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the finance subcommittee dated May 11th. Is there a motion? I have a motion by Ms. Tensley Williams, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion? No discussion. All those, uh, now I do have Mr. Wallahan.
Any typos blame me.
Okay, we will. We will. It's your fault. At least I'm not present there, so you can't put the. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes unanimously. The next meeting minutes is from the DEI subcommittee and that they met on Friday, August 11th. Wow, she's on time with these notes. Wow, that's amazing. I entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the DEI subcommittee. I have a motion by Mr. Collmore, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion?
I do have a question for, um,
Wilson.
Dr. Rivera Cologne. Um, you've worked hard for that title. And I'm just wondering, is that what you'd like to be referenced as or Ms.? I'm just wondering, what is your preference so that we are appropriate?
If there are no rules against it, I would like to be referenced as doctor. Cause my state of unmarried is of nobody's.
Worked very hard for that. So I would like to, so going forward, you'd like to be referred to as doctor. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I gotta remember this. So I'm gonna have to put that, can you put that on the agenda right here? If I can always remember. No, if you, we call doctors right, doctors right. This one, we just call Mr. Soto.
Dr. Soto.
Oh, God. Wear it. Um, any further discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Great. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ongoing minutes, ups, updates from the policy subcommittee as everybody has here from the policy subcommittee. Ms. Wilson.
So when looking through this, I, I do want to say I recognize that there was, um, so first of all, there was a title change. We now have an executive director of finance. Um, and we do not have, uh, a chief financial officer any longer. So that would need to be updated. Um, just to clarify. And then, um, I just wanted, hold on. I wish there was, all right. Going forward, I'm gonna number these, number, page numbers because I like page numbers. Um, that way we can reference them easily. Um, so under, um, D B C, which is the one, two, third page on the backside, um, this was just budget deadlines and schedules. There's no current policy. So we'd be adding this policy to ours as well as, um, the H P S D B F policy is being removed because it's covered, um, under other policies, which would be the next one, D B G, budget adoption procedures. Um, I did notice on, uh, D B G, um, that the word town is there and we should reference it as a city.
D B what?
D B G, budget adoption. Instead of using the town, we should use the word city. And then there were two new policies added, um, that mask D E C, federal funds supplement, not supplant policy. And then the other is authorized signatures. And I did want to have a conversation about the authorized signatures as a, as a committee. I know we talked a little bit about it, but I wanted to just get our heads wrapped around. Um, you know, who would be signing? That's something I wanted to talk about as a, uh, we, we wanted, our subcommittee wanted to talk as a full group.
Okay.
Who would be signing warrants?
But when we do, cause it's part of the policy.
Right. When we do sign warrants, um, you know, I think there was some conversation about how timeliness is very important to the signature of warrants. And so that we should be having any finance subcommittee member be a- able to sign them because we know there is a significant series of checks that are done that culminate with our mayor signing off on every, um, you know, finance decision.
Mr. Collmore.
Yeah, uh, personal thought that the finance chairman sign all warrants. With an al- with an alternate case, in case by any chance he gets ill or she gets ill, uh, someone has to authorize to sign these warrants. And I think that, that, uh, you would name, it wouldn't be just, uh, anyone on that subcommittee. You would name a, a person that would take his or her place to sign these.
Ms. Brunel.
So as somebody who used to sign warrants, how we did it then is every member of the finance subcommittee was authorized to sign the warrants. Every warrant, warrant had to have a minimum of two signatures. That way one person wasn't solely liable. And you had to schedule the time to go down weekly. So you must commit to going to sign weekly, each and every member of the finance subcommittee. Because if it already has two signatures, it's simply taken out of the pile. But there's so many warrants that come through that if Jay goes on a Monday and I go on a Tuesday and I don't know who else on the committee off the top of my hand, but let's say Mil- um, Irene goes on a Thursday and you go on a Friday, we just did double the amount of warrant signing than if just one person went or two people went. So that's how we did it before. That would certainly be my recommendation again, moving forward because again, that way the responsibility is not on one person. And that way every warrant is having two sets of eyes, you know, at least look at it. We have found weird stuff back in the day that we questioned for sure. Like it doesn't come up very often, like the district runs pretty smoothly, but, um, you know, there's definitely times where you look at something, be like, oh my God, like look at the money we just spent on that, you know, it's a little different than reviewing budget. So I think it's a healthy experience for everyone on finance to have personally.
All right. So technically all this said was to recommend to send to the receiver for review, all of these policies.
Correct.
Okay. We're taking it as a whole. So I entertain a motion, um, to send to the receiver for review the following, um, policy. So it would be the yonder bags, um, policy D A fiscal management goals, D B annual budget, D B C, there is no current H P S bu- um, policy. And D B C is titled budget deadlines and schedules. Um, D B D, budget planning, D B F, public budget hearing, D B J, budget transfer authority, D D, funding proposals and applications. D E C would be a new creation. And that one would be?
D B C.
D E C, federal funds supplement, not supplant.
Yep.
Policy. D G A, which is?
Authorized signatures.
Authorized signatures and D H bonded employees and officers. So is there a motion? I got, I got a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Tensley Williams. Any discussion? Ms. Wilson.
The yonder polis- uh, policy is, uh, being, uh, updated because it's going to more than just the two schools. So I would like to amend and remove the yonder bag, uh, policy because there's been an updated one that's going to be sent for review. So it would just be all the Ds.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend the first motion. And it's going to be to remove the yonder bag. So from everything else that I said, have a motion, motion to send all the Ds to the receiver for review. Is there a second? So we have a second from Mr. Wellahan.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? No. Motion passes unanimously. So now I need another motion to, to the, we wouldn't because we passed this one. We amended it and it passed, but to re- remove the yonder bag, um, you want to table that, correct?
Correct. Be- because it's a new policy that's being presented and the subcommittee has not reviewed it yet.
So then we're sending it back to then the policy subcommittee.
Yes, we are.
I'd like to make a motion that we send, um, the first item, yonder bag procedures back to policy subcommittee, um, for further review.
Second.
So motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? A motion passes unanimously. Back policy and then these are to receiver. Okay, um, update from the finance subcommittee.
Minutes were approved. Thank you. Um, I would like to schedule a meet, maybe next month, uh, we can, um, I'd like to meet the new, uh, finance director. Get his take on the upcoming school year. So I'll touch base with Sam and schedule a meeting.
Sounds good. Um, Ms. Tensley Williams.
Do we have to make a decision tonight about sign, to sign?
No. This all went to him, um, to review. It's, it's not even policy yet and we can't, we can't sign any warrants. We don't have control of our schools. It's just we are, um, updating the policies and everything. So this way, when we do get our schools back, our policies are up to date and they're reflective of what we have to do. Yeah. Um, update from the joint city council school committee?
Yeah, we're working on scheduling one. Hopefully it's gonna be, uh, in September for sure. Um, I'll keep you guys posted. Jeff likes to check all the council's schedules first, so it's a little tricky to schedule.
Sounds good. Um, and now update from the diversity, equity and inclusion subcommittee?
Yeah. So we had our first meeting and working on trying to get together our committee charge and goals. See, it was our very first discussion, so it was hard to actually create one yet, but I think that we had, after putting all the minutes together, actually, I think that we have a pretty robust charge that just bubbles up from our conversation. We also would like to, um, put forward for our next, uh, full school committee, uh, discussion about the location of where our school committees take place in order for us to be more equitable and be closer to where the families are at.
I'm writing this down, so I put it on the agenda. Discussion on where school committee meetings are held. For more accessibility. That was the, cause I saw that you said, uh, talk to Mildred. And I'm like, oh my God, I know. I saw that. Okay. All right. So I put it right here. This is, so everybody, this is my T V book because I think I have early dementia. Um, but this is gonna help me remember. Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
If, if you're done, can I go back to the, uh, policy subcommittee? Cause I have our next three meeting dates. I would just like the full
Yeah.
Committee to know. September eleventh.
Oh, hold on. Were you all set? Would that was, okay. Thank you so much for your update. Okay, um, Ms.
September eleventh.
Eleventh.
October twenty-third and December eleventh.
Nine eleven.
Ten twenty-three and twelve eleven. Scheduled during Conica with my luck.
And, um, Ms., uh, Dr. What's that? I, I, I wrote it down. That's why I remembered. Um, Dr. Rivera Cologne, did you have an upcoming meeting or not yet? You'll let us know. You'll send us an email?
I will definitely send an email, but we agreed on having the meeting on when, the second Wednesday of.
Every month. That's right. You did say that. I read that. I did, it's because I didn't write it down. But I, I read it. Excellent. Thank you. Um, Mr. Kennedy, you doing okay? All right. Out of state field trips. I don't think there was anything in the packet about that, correct? Um, student activity approval? I did see something here. One.
Yeah. So the, um, the girls soccer booster club was dissolved. Um, and the school wanted a, uh, a legal way to raise funds for girls soccer in Holyoke. Um, so they had requested to, the creation of a student activity, um, which I had approved and wanted to share with, with the committee.
Thank you. Ms. Brunel.
Yeah, just for clarity purposes, student activity like a club?
Student activity is, yeah, it's a, there's, there's P T Os that have nothing to do with student activities. And then there's student activities which are, uh, you know, student driven. The students are involved. There's usually a student advisor and, uh, uh, one, a teacher that, that takes on a club advisory role. Um, so anytime we create a new club, so like, uh, uh, where, where funds are going to be handled, um, it is a requirement i- in our policy to make sure that the, the s- any new policy, any new activities, any new student activity accounts or groups that are formed are, are reviewed by the school committee.
It's not a new club?
Booster club wouldn't be run by the school. It would be run by a parent outs- an outside organization.
So if they're gonna raise funds, holding the account.
Be in munis. So it would, it would be, it's so many controls around in, in terms of being able to spend that money. The risk is like, or it gets to the business office to put it in munis. We have, uh, a student activity policy that, that, that tries to get at minimizing risk there. Like our cash handling procedures are that, that no school holds on to cash for more than forty-eight hours, that it keep, gets locked in a safe, things of that nature.
So the teacher advisor that signed on for this, are they gonna help the students solve that clerical end of thing? Okay. And then just for clerical purposes, Mel Martin is not the principal. Um, and this should have principal on it, just, you know, to make sure we're legit. Um, she's obviously, we all know she's not the principal. Um, but then I guess that would be the second question. Does she also have signatory rights on this account? Like if the girls are raising money, they get say over how the money's spent or like, you know, I wanna me, I don't know how these.
Yes, they get say, uh, with the class advisor. Student activities are supposed to be student driven. Students making the decision on how funds are, are, are to be administered. That's different than like a booster club where students aren't involved in the decision-making, but student activities, it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be, yes.
And the reason I ask for clarity is I just want to make sure like these kids aren't suddenly gonna get charged for like the trainer being at their game or, you know, transportation, like, uh, they tried to do the cheerleaders at one point in time or anything like that, right? Like the money they raise is for, if they want awesome sweatshirts at their senior banquet or, you know, stuff like, okay. Cool. I fully support this, but we need to change that, uh, principle. I know you're not looking for a sport anyway, but I think it's awesome that the kids took the initiative.
All right. So moving on to announcement. Oh, that's right. I didn't write it down. Ms. Tensley Williams.
This question is for Mr. Soto. Uh, in the past, we used to get copies of the sports schedules and I was wondering how come we don't have those anymore?
Um.
Yes, we used to have copies.
They're all online.
We really need those.
Yeah, we, I mean, we post them online, but we can make sure that at the next meeting, we share the, whatever athletic schedules are up to date.
Ms. Wilson.
They don't print them anymore.
Yeah, we need them.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm just wondering, um, can we get an update as to, um, who's in positions within central office? Um, and what positions and what, what their scope is. So we have an understanding because, you know, we have two who are joining us. But I would just like a, a, understanding of that. So.
Yeah, I mean, I provided that as part of the budget. When we reviewed it, but I can, is there anything specifically you're looking for?
No, it's just like, um, you know, with the new leadership updates, you, you know, you listed what they were and what their scope was.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what I'm looking for. Their, their name, possibly their phone number, email, the scope of their role. Like that would be like.
We have the org charts in the budget document that was given.
But it would need to be updated then.
It'll be updated. Yes.
So I would like the updated one wi- with these two new individuals. I would love that.
Okay.
So when there's positions within that, I, I feel that that should be ongoing by the.
Yeah, we, I mean, we already updated it, but we, we will provide that updated org chart to the school committee for the next meeting.
Mr. Wellahan.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure if the committee received correspondence from City Hall. Uh, there is a Hoyok Day at the Big E.
Um, We all got the email.
September twelfth. So I think, when I'm to attend, contact the mayor's office.
Everybody would have gotten an email because you had to send back to, um, Juan Anderson, nope, sorry. Jeffrey Anderson Burgos, the waiver, um, in order to participate. So, um, September 12th.
We also get tickets for all of our students for that day as well. Free of charge.
All right, going on, moving on to announcements, um, back to school welcome coordination by one Hoyoke. I'm assuming that's who's gonna be coordinating it. Just, um, if you guys can let, Ms. Garcia, are you gonna be, you want us to email you, um, to let you know? What school you're gonna be there to, um, welcome the students back? Um, the first day of school is the 30th. Is the 30th and we already know the start and end times. Okay, so.
Are they gonna do it again for pre K K day? Okay.
So if you can just let Ms. Garcia know, um, when you which school you're able to go to, um, to welcome the students back, okay? Let her know by the end of, of this week. That's good, right? All right, everybody take your pens and paper out, cause I'm gonna go down this real quick. Um, we're looking for members to sit on the MIAA, uh, board. And so if you are interested in sitting in any of these open positions, you need to reach out to our president for MASC, Stacy Rizzo from Revia. And her email is M A S C S T A C E Y at gmail dot com. And these are the open positions. It would be baseball, basketball, football, gymnastics, hockey, boys lacrosse, rugby, skiing, softball, swimming, oh, volleyball. Volleyball, unified basketball, unified track and field and sportsmanship. Mr. Collomore?
I have already notified Glenn that I wanna continue on the volleyball.
The volleyball? Okay. So Mr. Collomore, are you going to the meetings? For the volleyball MIAA meetings?
Whenever I'm notified, I go to those.
Are they notifying you? Cause that's the, okay. So then that's the issue because we're supposed to receive reports. We're not receiving reports. So I am gonna let Ms. Rizzo know, um, that you're not being notified. Um, in regards to the, the meetings and what's happening is that they're sending emails. I don't think they're doing like the snail mail.
I don't know where they're going to, whether they're going to, uh, the athletic director.
It would go specifically to the school committee member that's represent, that's the MIAA board. Okay. All right. So I'll check in with, with Ms. Rizzo. Okay. If they're only doing it by email, then what I'm gonna do is if it's okay with you, we'll use Ms. Brunel's email. Um, she just offered for them to send her the, the invites for the meetings and then she'll bring it to you. I don't know if they're in person again. They, they might still have Zoom availability, but everybody heard those. So anyways, if you wanna join, uh, be, um, considered for one of those positions, by all means, please get ahold of, um, Ms. Rizzo. The other thing is the back to school event dates. If you look on the website, it has all of the back to school events when Kelly School's gonna have theirs, uh, McMahon, um, so that way if you wanna attend and, and see what's happening, um, it would be great. Okay. Well, anyways, that's it for me. Um, our next meeting is going to be September, uh, September 18th. Um, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
The move second.
Second, all, oh.
I was just wondering really quick if it was allowed in, I don't know the rules. If I could leave a quick note at the end of the meeting for all the committee members? Not really. And if it's not, that's totally okay. I just have something that I would like to say really quick.
Oh, after the meeting or you want it now?
No, like right before the meeting ends, like really quick.
It's your floor, buddy.
All right, thank you. Um, so I mentioned this briefly earlier, but the students have taken quite a dip in their mental health, um, and I feel like it's not being addressed properly. Um, I can say that last year, the classroom was, for me anyway, personally, was not super tolerable. And the one thing that kinda elapsed, kinda made it slightly tolerable was the ability to kinda unplug from the classroom. But as we all know, that is kind of being taken away this year, which, okay. Um, and I have not seen anything in any of the presentations that suggest a decrease in the testing, which is kind of, you know, drowned students last year. So I would like for whoever may, I really don't think it's the committee members, but whoever is, um, making the, you know, looking at this stuff, looking at the mental health stuff, to keep an eye on that as you're implementing all of this new, um, all of these new procedures and stuff like that. That's what I had to say. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
So maybe what we could do, and I'm writing it, um, is to discuss SEL supports and resources and what's provided to our students and maybe even recommend, um, like an advisory, student advisory council that's geared towards mental health. It's not towards all the other stuff, but more so like a mental health advisory council created by students, um, and you guys.
Because I think especially at this day and age with everything happening, mental health is a major thing that needs to be focused on.
It's been for a long time, buddy. Um, but what everybody was focused on, um, many years ago was autism because it was kind of rising. Um, it was at one in 10 when, um, major depression and anxiety was at one in four. But we pushed that aside. I know because I was a strong advocate for mental health, um, awareness. Um, now's when people are reacting, so kind of like the history is that we're more reactive versus proactive and now we're paying the consequences. And so are, so is our youth. Ms., um, Wilson?
So when you speak to, um, tests, I'd like to get an understanding of what, what are you thinking about when you use this very broad term?
Um, I know that many people in here have, you know, expressed concerns about, um, the recent, the recent uptick in standardized testing for students, mandatory standardized test. And even when I failed to advocate for the students, many members of this committee did. Um, and I think that last year especially with the massive uptick, when we were hitting like every two weeks taking a standardized testing, even right up until MCAS, it was severely draining. We were drowning all around and we were getting no support for it. No mental health support and that's nothing by the counselors. They are flooded with their own things. Um, so I think that especially with, you know, the recent uptick, um, maybe if those aren't gonna go away, then maybe evaluate some of the other tests that have been in around for so long. Or maybe the curriculum that is constantly increasing to, um, aim for students just to pass a test should be nailed back or, you know, I, I don't, I don't know if that answered your question. I'm sorry. If you want specific tests, I'd say that the star in the A net, since we can't do anything about the MCAS and it's just gonna keep increasing, that those need to be looked at and evaluated severely. Because it was incredibly overwhelming last year and.
Do you feel that the testing took away from your time learning?
Um, yeah, I do because all of the, a lot of the learning was not focused on what we needed to actually learn in the real world. It was to get us past this test. I can guarantee if you put many very, um, accomplished people in this world in front of one of those tests, they would probably wouldn't pass it because they wouldn't need to know the information that's on the test in order to get their success. So I think that we need to really stop with this constant just disregard for what it's actually, you know, doing to the students and focus on what we actually need to know and focus less on trying to get past that.
Thank you.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Mr. Kennedy is correct. Um, when teenagers are taking their lives, it's very disturbing. So we really need to jump in on that mental health. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. We already know where you're, where you are.
Thrive Act, Thrive Act. One of the reasons why this act is so important because not only address standardized testing, but the weight we've applied to standardized testing and the pressure that that puts on our students. Um, for next school committee, I would love to see a schedule of our assessments for the 2023, 2024 school year. What grade do we begin assessments at? How often are we assessing our students, especially those in the dual language? Cause I'm assuming we're assessing them in two languages. Um, I would love to see that broken down to see, you know, if MCAS are in April, right, the different topics, but what other assessments are we putting on you guys, you know, before that? But again, I can't emphasize the importance of how this ties into the Thrive Act. So like, anybody you know that wants to learn more about this and advocate, you know, your student council to advocate, this is a very important bill for exactly what you're talking about. I feel like this body and the, the receiver, um, specifically fully understands the needs of mental health within our, our district. But I don't think anybody fully understands the impact of testing on students' mental health on the day to day.
Yeah.
Cause we don't hear about it. I mean, I hear about it from my own kids, but I don't hear about it from an eloquent high schooler yet, you know, so like, I would love to see like, you know, within your student government, like how you guys can like rally together to bring us more information on the impacts, like surveying kids, um, you know, so that way we can do more because yeah, granted we're under receivership, so in, you know, our hands are a little bit tied, but Mr. Soto has definitely always heard us. And I think collectively, if we have the knowledge and the information and can put forth the argument, right? And then we can decide from there best ways to move forward and like, you know, I'm sure our teachers and our staff also feel somewhat not undervalued, but almost like what they do for our students isn't, isn't as valued because we're consistently not solely judging them based on these assessments, but we overweight these assessments ba- uh, over like, how was your chapter two quiz on the topic that we covered in US history this week? Versus like, how did you do on this ridiculous test? So thank you for always advocating for the students in Ohio Public Schools and for bringing that to our attention and I look forward to continuing the discussion.
Because it's also not just the test of the district or the state is mandating, but also the test specifically at Dean, that we need to take the extra tests to get our certifications to get out in the workforce. Like every student last year was mandated to complete their OSHA 10 certification as well as the certifications to get out on co-op. And even the students who need extra, I don't know the proper word for this, extra assistance in a classroom, they're taking, yeah, they're taking extra classes or, uh, yeah, extra classes and extra tests to get them their certificates, to get them where they need to be. So we're not only overworking the students who, you know, are on grade level, we're overworking the students in the high schools who are below the grade level and need to help getting up. So that's, yes, thank you for hearing and I was trying to not target my frustrations towards anyone's. I apologize if that, I apologize if that felt a little bit targeted.
No, no, Mr. Kennedy, but what I do wanna say, it's, um, what they wanna hear is, is, is the story, right? And, um, it's important that for, for students to tell their story. Cause things don't change. At the end of the day, and I think what people fail to realize quite often than not is that we're here because of you. It's so, if you weren't here, none of us would be here. Bottom line. You wouldn't have a job, he wouldn't have a job. We wouldn't even need to be here, right? Because we don't have the students. So we're here to make sure that your educational experience is one, not only that it's rewarding, that you enjoy it, but that you, you become successful, right? And it's not just successful in education. It's also successful in real life, the outside world. Right? Cause what you're gonna be facing once you graduate. So you want things to change, then we need to hear your stories. We need to hear the stories of your classmates and it's not, Ms. Brunel, just high schoolers. It's even middle schoolers. It's even elementary. As a parent of, of kids that suffered from mental health, I had to learn and it, and change my mindset. Although I'm a psych nurse, I had to change my mindset to listening to them. Cause they're the ones that are experiencing it. Not me. I'm experiencing the frustration because I'm going crazy, cause I don't know what to, what to do for them, right? But once I stopped that and I started listening and figuring out, and remember, everybody's individual. So imagine five, five crazy people, right? You gotta figure out how to work with all of them, but how, right? So my kids were each individual. And that's how we have to start doing things, right? Is really listening to the students because that's how we bring change and we make sure that we're meeting their needs. So get your people rallied. Let's start hearing your stories. That's what we need to do. Um, Ms. D- uh, mm, Dr. Rivera Cologne?
And I just wanna reinforce, especially for whoever is listening, that this is not just students complaining. This is hard and they don't wanna do the work. This is not it. There is research that has shown that places where they get more testing more often, there's higher levels of stress, anxiety and depression. This is not just something made up. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you. So be prepared.
Yeah, I, I shouldn't have gray hair and I, I do, so.
Do you want some of these?
I'm, I'm.
I think it's your mother.
I'm 16, so like that, that probably shouldn't be happening.
All right. So do I have a motion? Oh, Ms. Tensley Williams?
I'm just, I'm going to make this quick. Last week I had a lot of fun teaching vacation Bible school. It's been a long time since I taught Bible school, so it was very, very nice. It was a change of pace too for me. So thank you guys. I love all of y'all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Collomore. Oh, I hope it's soon. Go ahead, Mr. Collomore.
Read today's paper about Baystaff University cooperating with City of Hoyoke, our high school and our, our dean's school about a co-op program. They have joined us and it's a wonderful thing for the City of Hoyoke because I know you people are scrolling around, but 1952, it started right here in Hoyoke, at this school right here in Hoyoke, Massachusetts, a cooperative program where Mr. Dean, principal of the school, went to Chamber of Commerce, formed a committee that would talk to business people, allowing students to, uh, into their shops, um, on a weekly basis to learn about different things. So I think it's wonderful that we have a university now working with us here in Hoyoke about the cooperative program throughout the country now.
Excellent. And I'm just gonna take a pause and observe. Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion seconded. Okay, Ms. Tensley Williams motion seconded by Ms. Feliciano. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I doubt it. Motion passes, meeting adjourned at 8:32.